Thank you very much. So I am John Hafeman, Chair of the Planning Commission, and I call to order the San Rafael Planning Commission's regular meeting of Tuesday, March 14, 2024, at 7:20 p.m. Margaret, would you like to call the roll?
Yes, Mr. Chair. Commissioner Subsuti.
Here.
Commissioner Sadi.
Here.
Commissioner Rodby.
Here.
Chair Hafeman.
Here.
We have a quorum, Mr. Chair.
Okay. Does any member of the Commission want to offer further revisions to the order of the agenda? I think there's only one item on it, so it would be hard to reorder the agenda, okay? Can I have a motion and a second to adopt? We don't need to motion and second to adopt the order, do we? Just if we revise it?
Actually, you could do a motion and a second and a vote to adopt the agenda for the evening.
Okay. Well, can I have a motion and a second to adopt the agenda for the evening?
Commissioner Sumudzy, so moved.
Commissioner Sadi, second.
Margaret, would you take the roll, please?
Yes, sir. Commissioner Subsuti?
Yep.
Commissioner Sadi?
Yes.
Commissioner Rodby?
Yes.
Chair Hafeman?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously. We're at the item for public notification of meeting procedures this evening. As in every evening, people are welcome to come to the meeting and provide public comment in person. Each speaker will have a time limit set by the chair to provide the public comment. When it's your turn to speak, state your name, share your address if you wish to do so. Now we're on to oral communications from the public.
Okay. Thank you, Margaret. Tonight, remarks are limited to three minutes per person and may be on anything within the subject matter jurisdiction of the body. Remarks on non-agenda items will be heard first. Remarks on agenda items will be heard at the time the item is discussed. Does anyone wish to speak on an item not on tonight's agenda? If so, please come forward.
Yeah, not on the table.
Okay, great. There are no items on the consent calendar this evening, so we'll move on to the action agenda, the action items. We have one action item this evening. It is the appeal of zoning administrator decision to approve the conditional use permit and minor design review to install a freestanding wireless tower at 999 Old Lucas Valley Road. I want to share with everyone the order of the public hearing this evening. First, the staff report will be presented by the public, the planning manager, Margaret Kavanaugh Lynch. Commissioners will have an opportunity to ask clarifying questions of staff after that presentation. Second, I will open the public hearing, and the appellant will give a presentation to the commission. Commissioners can ask questions of the appellant. The presentation will be held to 15 minutes, though it is fine for the questions to extend past that time. Third, the applicant will give a presentation rebattle. Commissioners will have an opportunity to ask questions of the applicant. The presentation, again, will be held to 15 minutes, though again, it is fine for the questions to extend past time. Fourth, I will ask any member of the public, not part of the appellant or applicant team, if they would like to come forward and speak on this item. Comments will be held to three minutes each. After that, I will check back in with the members of the commission to see if any of the testimony brought up additional questions. And if so, we may call back the appropriate party to respond to those questions. Then I will close the public hearing and bring the item back for discussion by the members of the commission. The purview of the commission this evening, as noted in the municipal code and the staff report, is identified in Chapter 14.28 of the San Rafael Municipal Code, Section 14.28.05. It states in part, "After the hearing, the appellate body shall affirm, modify, or reverse the original decision." To summarize the whole item, the Planning Commission will hold a public hearing and, at its conclusion, affirm, modify, or reverse the original decision of the acting zoning administrator based on their own findings of fact gathered from the staff report, written record, as well as the oral and written testimony of the appellant, applicant, and all other parties that provide information to the commission at the hearing. Margaret, you'll be giving the presentation? Okay?
Yes, sir.
Please proceed.
So tonight's action item is the public hearing to consider the appeal of the acting as an administrator decision to approve a conditional use permit and minor design review to install a freestanding wireless facility at 999 Old Lucas Valley Road. The overview of tonight's report will be to set the legal setting for the project, an overview of the project itself, and an overview of the appeal and staff responses. There's a much more detailed staff report that was available online and to the commissioners in their packet. This is meant just to be an overview. I will go deeper into the appeal points and then the staff responses so that that information is clear. The full appeal itself was attached as one of the exhibits to the staff report packet. Okay, so the legal setting for this project before the commission this evening is basically set out in three different sections of the municipal code. The first one also references the FCC's legal context for discussions of telecommunications apparatus. I will not read this all to you. It was in your report. But the first and foremost is the sections 1416, 360, which is our wireless communications. And that does draw back to the federal regulations on this topic. The second entitlement to be considered is the use permit. And this is the purpose of the use permits, generally speaking. It's, use permits are definitely, are generally, so a use may or may not be acceptable. It's, in planning language, it depends. In this case, is there a way to modify the project so that with conditions of approval, you can be able to make the findings for use permits, which typically involve, is it consistent with the code, the general plan, and is it not detrimental? So that's what the use permit does. It sets parameters on the use. And then finally, Chapter 1425, which is the environmental design review. Again, that's the purpose of that chapter before you on the slide. More specifically, that's what it looks like. That's that component of the entitlement process. The project consists of a new freestanding wireless telecommunications facility within the city of San Rafael. The objective, as stated in the application, was to fill a significant coverage gap along Lucas Valley Road and Los Galinas Avenue. The monopole is proposed to be 56 feet high. And in the original application, it was a monopine, which is one of those faux pine trees that you often see as you drive around California. The purpose of the cloaking in a pine, or as we discuss later on, a mono oak, which is another variation that they're willing to provide for the commission's consideration this evening, is to conceal a total of 12 panels that are proposed. The monopole itself is 49 feet above ground level with the additional height being the cloaking items themselves. It would be placed about 25, within a 25 by 25-foot compound surrounded by six feet of tall chain-link fence with barbed wire. The ground equipment would also include an eight-by-eight walk-in equipment cabinet and a diesel emergency backup generator with fuel. The facility would be accessed using the existing roads in that vicinity, and utilities would be run underground. Okay, so to jump to the facts of the appeal. On January 17, the zoning administrator, acting as an administrator, held a hearing and, after taking in all of the testimony and the documents, decided, determined to approve the project with the conditions that were included in your original staff report. On January 23, 2024, the city received a timely appeal. That was included in its entirety and as Exhibit C. We originally had set the appeal date for the commission at February 27, but we did have some room in our shot clock, which runs, so, I'm sorry, backing up telecommunications have something called a shot clock that's set by the FCC. Our shot clock runs to March 24, 2024. So staff did have the ability to honor a request by the appellant to move it to this meeting instead so that more people could come. It was a, we did have some flexibility, so we took advantage of that. Okay, and I think the chair outlined the situation, the context for this evening before the commission this evening is to hold the hearing. The commission is acting as the appellate body. They have the option to affirm, modify, or reverse the original decision after hearing all the testimony presented to you this evening. There were ten, as stated in the slide, there were 10 items, and there's a typo. There's actually a number of typos, and I apologize for that. But there is 10 issues identified by staff in summary from the appellant's letter. I want to, that was my best attempt to summarize each of those 10 issues. It certainly wasn't to speak for the appellant's, and I know that they have a presentation this evening that we can show you. And again, it was all included in the packet. So I'm going to briefly summarize the issues and the staff responses so that they're fresh in everyone's mind this evening. Issue one was no staff report of materials were provided to the public in advance of the hearing, as you can see from the attached agenda. It would be difficult for the public to understand the tower height and the number of towers being contemplated. The staff responses, staff concurs on this issue. When I started in November, I was surprised that we didn't put out a staff report with attachments before zoning administrator hearings. I was told by some staff that are currently employed by the city of San Rafael that we've never in the history of the zoning administrator put out a staff report in advance. This particular meeting brought it to a height of concern. So from this point on, we do now put out staff reports ahead of it, especially when we're talking about photo sims. That's the kind of thing that, facts help resolve concerns, right? Either they make them sharper or they remove them, but they certainly, wondering how it was going to look was not great. It was a past practice. We've now corrected that practice. So that's, staff completely agrees with issue one. Issue two. San Rafael Municipal Code 14.10 Parks Open Space provides specific uses. Subsection G provides that one of the purposes is to discourage public utility facilities in open space areas to minimize harm to the area's visual quality. Staff response to that is yes, and public and utility facilities are permitted through a use permit process. In this case, the site is already, utilities are a fact of life, but the visual beautiful open space and the forested hill are already complicated by the water tower and an additional cell site. So this was considered an appropriate location in lieu of moving it to another site and making another utility visual issue elsewhere. Also, as discussed in the applicant's presentation and in the original submittal, they looked around as part of their locational efforts, and this was a site that worked well to fill their needs and objectives. So that's the, basically the response to issue two. It's also worth noting, and in the staff report, the city cannot unreasonably discriminate among providers for functionally equivalent services, and that's under the FCC regulations. So we only get some say in the telecom discussions, and that's why the application proceeded and the location it did. Issue three. The municipal code, Section 14.10.030, provides a maximum height of 36 feet with exceptions allowed, subject to the provisions of Chapter 14.24. It allows for height increases where, quote, "necessary for health and safety purposes" and "may only be approved where scenic views are not adversely affected or where exceptional design is provided." Sorry. Et cetera. One, two, three, four, five, six. Anything above five feet, generally speaking, in the appellant's statement, that section of code references that the planning commission should be reviewing this. And that is a theme that came up in the appeal a couple of different times, that the appellant believed that this was something that should have been decided originally at the planning commission. The staff response notes that while the municipal code, Section 1410.030, applies generally to development in a zoning district, staff is required to use a more specific standard, and that's that wireless facility one code section at 1416, 360. Again, in the staff report, go on in detail about what the city's telecommunication ordinance discusses and how the purpose focuses in that this is the section of the municipal code that staff can use to, is required to use when reviewing a telecommunications device. Specifically, it sets out different levels of review that are required for various types of wireless facilities. Subsection of that chapter, B.2.A, requires discretionary review for new ground-mounted facilities, towers, and monopoles, or significant additions to the proposed or existing facilities that would improve the visual height, overall dimensions, et cetera. It also notes that acting zoning administrator level use permit and environmental design review will be required for those items following this chapter. So what I don't, I want to skim this without being too deep in, but of course, if you have questions about how this breaks out, please ask me. Finally, that same section, different subsection, B.2.D, offers staff some flexibility as to the body of decision. It states the director may elevate the project for review and action by the planning commission or refer the project to design review if they determine it necessary. In this case, the determination was originally made by a previous community development director, and the project was under review when the current interim director and the planning manager joined the city. However, when the question of purview was raised at the zoning administrator hearing, the acting zoning administrator, which was myself, and the associate planner reviewed the code again and verified that it was the appropriate level of review, and then proceeded with the hearing. I think that's going to cover that section. Issue four. Municipal code, Section 1410.30, also refers to Chapter 1416 for site development standards. This is the appellant issue four. References encourages that, 1416, 360, which is a telecom or wireless facility section, encourages joint use for new and existing ground-mounted facilities as a primary option rather than the construction of additional-use single towers. The applicant stated that the existing sprint pole would not support more equipment. The appellant requested the city evaluate the alternative and required replacement of the existing sprint pole with a new pole that would support the equipment. Staff response to that item is "There is no legal basis to require the existing wireless facility, known as the sprint pole or the sprint tower, to replace its equipment in order to support the equipment of another carrier. The city must analyze the development application as it is currently before the city in a manner that's consistent with federal and state law." The zoning administrator did just that, basically at the hearing, but I do want to draw your attention to Condition of Approval 26, which will require this provider to build the site in a way that supports future co-location. So that's trying to stop this from continuing on. And those conditions are included in Exhibit B. Issue five. The application contains a request for a height of 56 feet. Why weren't itinerations provided to balance the coverage versus visual impacts? For example, every five feet, et cetera, et cetera. The design of the additional antenna facilities should be as low, stealth, and as inconspicuous as possible. And an alternative site analysis should have been prepared by the applicant, and it should have been reviewed by staff or a third party. And both the analysis and the review should have been included in the staff report attached to the agenda. The site analysis should have been a narrative describing the alternative analysis that were considered that would meet coverage objectives, coverage map, alternative designs, heights, and placements that would meet the coverage objectives. The site is one of the least preferred locations. Therefore, the analysis should have demonstrated that the site was critical to meet the coverage objectives, and there was no feasible alternative that could be selected. Again, in part, staff concurs that a staff report should be prepared. It's not required by law, but it is absolutely a good practice, and it helps the transparency and the dialogue of any development application. In this case, however, the application, which included the site analysis and alternatives, was available online through our software system. It has all planning projects available for public review. The application also described the objective of the project in that application, which was to improve coverage and capacity along the area centered on Lucas Valley Road and Los Galinas Avenue, and a coverage map which illustrated both the need for the wireless facility and the coverage provided once the facility was completed. When completing the analysis, staff asked the applicant for a second coverage map to model what the coverage would look like if the wireless facility was capped at 36 feet. That second coverage map was included in your packets as Exhibit E, and it was also available through the Trackett system. It does verify that it's a far more limited coverage in the objective areas, therefore supporting the need for the proposed height included in the application. In addition, the acting zoning administrator questioned the applicant at the hearing to confirm how the applicant identified the height of the wireless facility. And it was confirmed that the engineers that do the research to basically establish the location and the height of these facilities, the engineers assured him that this was the height that was needed to meet their objectives. That statement, along with the application information and the supplemental submittal and staff analysis, confirmed to the zoning, acting zoning administrator that the proposed height was what was required to be allowed by FCC regulations in order to not, and this is a reference to state, federal law, material inhibit the ability of the wireless providers to provide services. Item six. 14 Municipal Code, Section 14, 360, 360G.3, provides required findings regarding the location that the proposal will avoid or minimize adverse effects. These findings were not made in the notice of decision. How was it determined that the mock-up of the facility was not required? Staff response. The findings in that section are as follows. The location of the proposed facility site is essential to meet the service demands of the carrier, and no other alternative co-location, existing development or utility facility type, site, or type of antenna support structure is feasible. This shall be documented by the applicant, providing the list of locations and preferred technical feasible sites with good-faith efforts and measures taken, and specific reasons why these efforts and measures were not successful. B. The use of the monopole for the proposed facility by itself or in combination with other existing approved or proposed facilities will avoid the adverse effects related to the land use compatibility, visual resources, and public safety. Staff noted that the application did, in fact, include that alternative site analysis, noting the objective, the areas in the vicinity that might work to meet the objective, including other wireless facility in the area, and why none of those sites would be successful. Further, the acting zoning administrator did find that the, at the hearing, that the use of the new monopole, using either a faux pine or oak finish at the height proposed, would minimize the adverse effects related to the land use compatibility, visual resources, and public safety in that it was being located on a site already containing, as we noted before, the water tower and the sprint site. As condition, it would be constructed to meet all federal, state, and local regulations related to this application. In lieu of requiring story poles in a wooded area, the acting zoning administrator found that photo simulations provide adequate visual representation of the proposed subject, and the director was able to make that determination. Item seven. The easement connection to Old Lucas Valley Road and Old Lucas Valley Road easement through the city's Jerry Russum Park requires ongoing maintenance. Old Lucas Valley Road is deteriorating, and the upslope and downslope shoulders are failing. The applicant and other users of the road need to enter into a long-term maintenance agreement now before additional construction traffic occurs. This is a designated Class 1 bikeway in the city's master plan. Staff response. As noted in the minutes of the acting zoning administrator hearing, the, it was explained at that hearing that it's not legally possible to require the applicant to maintain the access road owned by others. However, any damage caused by the construction or maintenance of the facility would be the responsibility of the applicant. Item eight. The appellant requests that the water tank-fire road trail remain open to the public during the construction and maintenance. Staff response. The planning commission may choose to request that of the applicant and/or property owner if they wish to volunteer to leave the water tank-fire road open during construction and maintenance. Although these parties may also choose to limit the trail for public safety reasons, city of San Rafael staff have no way to require this access and finds that many times it may be unsafe to do so. Item, new item nine. That's a typographic error. SRMC, the municipal codes, 1416, 360F, requires public notice to all property owners within 1,000 feet. We request that notice be provided for the commission meeting. The staff response. The section noted in the appellant's letter references notice of requirements for a public meeting or hearing to consider a use permit or the environmental design review, not the appeal. The appeal was noticed in compliance with the section of code for the appeal itself, which is 1429 Public Notice. This chapter referenced the required process for public notice. It was mailed to owners of the project site, the applicant, as well as affected homeowners' associations, and any non-owner occupants and tenants within a radius of only 300 feet. In addition, it was in the Marin Independent Journal dated February 24, 2024. Item 10. General Plan Policy, PROS 3.9, addresses utilities and in open space. We request a consistency determination in that notice of decision. Staff response. In the finding A of the environmental and design review component, the acting zoning, found in acting zoning administrator minutes, it was noted, quote, "That the property is in the Parks, Rec, and Open Space General Plan and land use designation. The new equipment will be located at the site with previously approved telecommunications facilities. The design of the new facility has been reviewed against Municipal Code 1416, 120 as the pole will extend above the established building height for the zoning district. The new facility will provide extended telecommunications services for this surrounding area, consistent with another general plan policy, CSI 4.16, found in the general plan." The appellant is requesting an additional consistency with the general plan for PROS 3.9. That goal states, "Discourage large-scale utility infrastructure such as electric transmission lines, large wind turbines, and cellular phone towers in local open space areas where such facilities already exist or where there is no other sighting options. Utilities should be located and designed to minimize harm to avian life and the area's environmental and visual quality." As noted in the staff report, the application does include an alternative site analysis, noting the objective, the areas of the vicinity that might work to meet the objective, including the other wireless facility in the area, and why none of those sites would be successful. Staff continues to find that the use of the new monopole, Staff continues to find that the use of the new monopole using either the faux pine or oak finish at the height proposed would minimize the adverse effects related to the land use compatibility, visual quality, in that it is proposed to be located on the site that has that existing water tower and the other wireless facility in an otherwise natural open space area. Therefore, staff continues to find this project consistent with the general plan. Item 11. Notice of decision. The site description references several existing cell towers. We believe that is incorrect, and it should be, it could be misleading in that someone may think this is an industrialized area when it's in fact open space. Staff response. Staff agrees with the term, that, that the term several existing cell towers is stated in the site description in the minutes. We do apologize that if this left the impression that the site was in an industrialized area. Other parts of the hearing did include a discussion of the site and reviewing the photo sims that illustrated the fact that the project site is located in an area comprised of wooded open space. This point was, also illustrates the need to make sure we have staff reports going forward. Item 12. Finding D refers to privately owned land. The site is public land owned by the Marin Municipal Water District. Staff response. Staff agrees that the site is owned by that district, and it's a type of special district as governed by the State of California. Staff continues to note that there will be minimal access from the public right away, and the facility itself will be surrounded by fencing and will not be open to the public. The last item is a request for a refund of the appeal fee. Municipal Code 1424-020E provides the height exceptions over five feet be referred to the commission. It also provides approval for the planning commission or, or acting zoning administrator. We concur that for a height of less than 41 feet, a case could be made for the acting zoning administrator approval of the application. However, Municipal Code Section 1402-02F, 02OF, provides that when a conflict in the code is found, the more restrictive controls, therefore we feel the appropriate body to have reviewed this application is the commission, and requesting our appeal to be refunded, our The staff response to that is, for some reason, not before me, but I can tell you. The section of the wireless code is the section that staff considers to be the prevailing section of code in which this project is being reviewed. The decision was taken. The appellant chose to make an appeal and pay the fee. So there was, we were following the protocols as called out in the municipal code. Further, it's worth noting that the only body in the City of San Rafael that can waive an appeal fee is the city council. Thank you for sticking with me through that. Again, just to, all of you, thank you. Just to restate the options before the commission this evening. One would be to adopt the draft staff resolution that's included as Exhibit 1, denying the appeal and affirming the decision to approve the project, or to modify the decision of the acting zoning administrator and provide findings to staff in order to approve the project with certain modifications, changes, or additional conditions, or reverse the decision of the acting and zoning administrator and provide findings to staff in order to deny the project. Staff would then prepare a resolution with those findings, and we would have to call a special meeting of the planning commission to a future date, but not, but prior to the March 24 shot clock. So if that becomes the pleasure of the commission to do so, we would want to adjourn to a date certain, because we wouldn't have time to renotice for any other items before the shot clock. This concludes the very long staff report, and I'm happy to take questions.
Okay. Thank you, Margaret. Feel free to take a drink before we. Do any members of the commission have any questions for Margaret? Okay, Margaret, appears we have no questions for you. So that, at this time, I will invite the appellant to come and give their presentation and take questions from the commission.
We're gonna load the appellant's presentation in just a second.
Okay.
Good evening. My name is, okay. Good evening. My name is John Rojas, and I'm a board member of the Mount Marin-Samorfel Park Neighborhood Association, and if you will, I'm president emeritus as well. The Mount Marin-Samorfel Park Home, Neighborhood Association was originally Mount Marin Solo Homeowners Association, established in 1967 when the homes were being built. In 2010, we merged with the adjacent property of the Samorfel Park Neighborhood Association. So we became a larger organization so that we felt we had more say in terms of power. So now we have 550 homes, and several of those, of course, most of those are members of our association. See, the community, the organization, I should say, the purpose is to disseminate information, to keep our residents informed of what's going on in the city, and to keep our neighborhood safe. And we have Neighborhood Watch. We have the first, in California, we were the first organization to buy open space. So that was in 1974. We purchased the open space in order to prevent the American Housing Guild from building more condominiums and homes on that beautiful land. And so there were people who spearheaded this. This is Jerry Russum, picture of Jerry Russum. Jerry Russum was a president of a neighborhood association at the time, and he eventually became a city council member. He and Maynard Wilms and Bill Love, a few other members, got together and made this proposal to buy the open space. And so through our taxes for 30 years, we, we purchased that property. And so in 1986, I was president at the time, actually, we dedicated the open space, part of the open space, to a park in Jerry Russum's honor. And that has been a very important part of our neighborhood. So the tower that is being proposed is on, adjacent to that property. And so it's very important to us that it stay as pristine as possible. Now, I can say that back in 2009, I'm not sure exactly which company was going to build their communication tower right on the top of Cedar Hill Drive, where I live on Cedar Hill Drive. And the neighbors got together, and we opposed that. It turns out that they didn't even have a permit to put the, you know, painting, the street with all the different colors and everything. And so it was, it was shut down. So we, we did stop that one. But however, Sprint was able to build the one that exists at this point. And so we have some comments to make about why we feel that this is an inappropriate location. And so I'm going to call on our board members. I'm going to introduce them to you, actually. I'm sorry, I didn't do that first. We have Craig Taco Berry, and we have Paulette McDevitt, Nicole Love, and Will Hanamoto. So thank you very much, and I'm going to turn it over to Craig Taco Berry.
Thank you, John. Thank you, members of the commission, for allowing us this time tonight. As John mentioned, one of the folks of our association is emergency response, and in general, we don't object to improved cellular, cellular communication, particularly for emergency response. We know it's important, but location's important. And prior to the hearing for the zoning administrator, we asked for information about the existing Sprint Tower approval. That information is not available on the website. We weren't, we didn't receive anything prior to the hearing. But subsequent to the hearing and our appeal, we received additional information in a public records request, and that was provided to you yesterday. So the next slide. There was significant local opposition after approval. The city approved it in January 1997, and a petition from 62 residents was filed once construction started and people knew what was going on. I didn't live here, then I moved here a couple of years later, and I guess it was quite controversial. And I was pretty shocked when I saw this package. In that packet, there's a letter from the city from, in that packet, Bob Pendoli, the planning director, to Mount Marin residents. I'm gonna read a portion of the letter. Over the past six weeks, the planning department has received a number of complaints from Mount Marin residents about the Sprint antenna that has been installed next to the water tank near Russum Park. I am writing to assure you that there won't be any more antennas at the water tank site, and to give some information that may be useful. The letter further states, the city does not have the power under the law to make Sprint remove the antenna. Sprint has agreed, however, to paint the antenna, and they will work with neighbors to get the best color. And continuing on, the letter says, we have heard the message loud and clear. While we have not received any applications for additional antennas at the water tank or in the area, we are prepared to recommend denial for an application in the area if it were received, and we do not see any circumstances where another antenna would be approved near Russum Park. Some of the members you'll be hearing from later were actually here during that time, and they're quite shocked that we're even having this meeting today based on that promise from the city. The next photo. It's hard to point out, but this is the open space area and the, I don't know how to show where things are.
You can use the mouse maybe.
Oh. Yeah, okay. The water tank site is up in here, and this is Lucas Valley Park, and this is the Cherry There's a Cherry Hill Trail. So I'm gonna show you a photo from here and from there. So the next one. So this is from the Cherry Hill Fire Road and Mount Marin Trail Junction, and you can see the existing tower definitely is a visual blight on the beautiful landscape. And next one. And this is from the Lucas Valley Park, looking south towards the tower site, and you can see the existing tower is, is quite large. And now to talk about the current proposal. As described, it would be a freestanding monopine-style stealth wireless facility with screening mimicking the surrounding tree types extending for a maximum of 56 feet above the existing grade. As stated earlier, the maximum height per the city code is 36 feet. And an exception to an antenna height may be granted by the planning commissioner zoning administrator if the RFR exposures and aesthetic quality of the proposed facility are found to be acceptable. The existing Sprint monopole is 40 feet high, and its base is two feet lower than the proposed AT&amp;T tower. Therefore, the AT&amp;T tower will be 18 feet higher than the Sprint tower. So you can just picture how much taller that's gonna be in that photo, another 18 feet. And then just commenting on a few of the issues that were described earlier. Issue one. Information provided the public for the January 17, 2024 hearing. It provided an address for a street that does not exist. There's no street called Old Lucas Valley Road. And it also did not mention Jerry Russum Park or the Lucas Valley Water Tank. There was no information on the height and no staff report. I, I'm not sure how, e- even for this hearing, how you thought most people would be able to actually know what was going on referring to a site on Old Lucas Valley Road that's not even a street anybody could drive on. And for this meeting, there's a 235-page staff report, which is just overwhelming, kind of shocked, we went from zero to 235 pages. And in issue two, staff states, in this instance, the visual quality of the open space had already been disturbed by the other existing uses. Additionally, because another carrier is located in this area, the city cannot unreasonably discriminate among providers of functionally equivalent services in the regulation of the placement of the wireless facility. So we feel it being already disturbed does not justify a taller tower. That's like saying it's already visually blighted, and no matter what they do, it can't get any worse. We disagree. That's not accurate. And discriminating among providers would refer to not allowing a similar use. This proposal's not similar. Its top is 18 feet higher. In issue four, staff states, there's no legal basis to require an existing wireless facility, the Sprint pole, to replace its equipment in order to support the equipment of another carrier. We respond, it appears that Sprint was not even asked if they would replace their pole to allow AT&amp;T to join them, or if AT&amp;T would install the new pole and see if Sprint would join them. With the sensitive nature of this location, if this is determined to be the only viable solution to provide service, we request a more active level of coordination. Issue five. Regarding the height and consideration of alternate locations, the staff response provides that staff asked the applicant to provide an additional height scenario. It is not clear what analysis by staff was done regarding alternate sites or alternate elevations. And the report references a search ring. What independent technical analysis was done to determine that what was specified in the applicant's report was justified? They identified no existing or alternate sites within their narrow search ring. It seems they saw the Jerry Russum site and stopped analyzing. Would a broader look at other sites provide other options? For example, the proposed coverage does not provide indoor coverage west of Lucas Valley School, formerly Dixie. Would a tower location that serves that area also provide coverage to the area targeted for this tower? The existing sites map they provided does not show the existing towers on Big Rock Ridge. Why not? It does not look at alternative heights for the existing towers that it shows. The staff response refers to a 36-foot height coverage analysis. Without further analysis of the coverage differences between those two, we do not see how determination can be made that the taller pole height is justified. In conclusion, without further analysis, we do not see a basis to approve a 56-foot high tower in this location. Use permit finding A says, would minimize adverse effects related to land use compatibility, visual quality, and that is proposed to be located together on a site that already contains an existing water tower and another wireless facility in an otherwise natural open space area. It sounds like that since there is already a controversial tower there, adding another taller one will not have any visual adverse effects. We disagree and request you make a finding to the contrary. The staff report does not provide any analysis regarding alternate locations or alternate heights. It seems that if the applicant had requested a 100-foot high tower, that would have been approved. The staff report indicates that the deadline for a decision is March 24, 2024, under the FCC shot clock. Based on that, it appears there is no opportunity for the planning commission to give the applicant feedback and continue the hearing. We feel there's adequate basis in the record to deny this application. We request that the application be denied and the decision of the zoning administrator be reversed. So a few more board members that wanted to speak. I don't know how we're doing on time. Fine?
Yeah. We're sort of off the rails at this point.
Good evening. My name is Nicole Love. I live on Tan Oak Circle. I face the hill where the tower is, and I just want to show you a little piece of history. I'm an original owner. Be advised that out of our 537 homes, not 550, we have many original owners. I moved in in 1968. Marge Russum, the wife of now deceased Jerry Russum, and I were spearheading a campaign to save the valley fair. We had garage sale where we gathered lots of things, and then the now-known Jerry Russum Park, we had a garage sale to earn money to help provide and buy the open space to keep this pristine area that we moved into the way it is now, except for this lovely tower that's existing. And the oaks have grown, and it's just even more fabulous than it was before when I moved in in 68. So that's the proof that we have been, and many of us have been, in this area a long time, and do not want this defaced any more than it already is.
Okay. Well, good evening, everyone. My name is Paulette McDevitt, and I'm just going to give a little background. I was born in Marin, and my father was, and my grandfather lived here. So I have a unique perspective on the value of the integrity of our community and our county. We live in a treasure. This is a beautiful place, and I think the planning commission, in addition to addressing the issues immediately, have the task to preserve the integrity of open space which the community purchased for everyone, all the people who use these facilities in the county. The basis of some of the decisions is that since something is there, let's put something else. If we start making decisions that way, it opens the door to many ways that this beauty might not be preserved. So I ask you to really consider the bigger picture of what your decision means. It's very important, and you have a lot of responsibility. It is up to you to explore more creative and attractive options that support remaining the, maintaining the integrity of our community while meeting the needs of people, and I
My name's Nancy Turgello. I'm a 35-year resident. I went on vacation, I don't remember the year. I came home, there was a tower. I called my neighbor. I called my neighbors, they were very angry. So I have a question. Was there ever another applicant to add on to the Sprint tower?
So in the planning commission meeting, you can do public testimony?
Oh, but I can't talk to you.
Yeah, we can get...
Okay, I didn't know that, I'm sorry.
Yeah, no, of course not, it's not.
So I don't remember the year. I got this notice last night about 7:00, and I worked all day, like you. I'm really tired. So they wanted to add on to the Sprint tower. We got the notice. We got about 150 signatures very easily from everyone in the neighborhood. And Craig Tamboni, who was on the planning commission, came to my home and stood in my kitchen and said, "I can't believe a tower ever got put there." You cannot see the water tower. You just see the cell tower. The water tower is covered by trees, for the most part. If you go up really high, you can see it, but you can't see the water tower at all. It doesn't look industrial at all. Craig then went to two other homes in the neighborhood and looked at the tower and made the same comments to the other people. And he said, "You don't have to worry. No one will approve an add-on or more towers there. This shouldn't have gone up in the first place." So I relaxed, and I was really surprised to see this last night. This is... You have to come and come to our home and look at this out our window, and you will say, "That doesn't belong there." So the 56-foot height, I don't see how that could have been approved at all. I mean, the 40-foot height is bad. And this is a nice picture of it. And as you can see, you can't see the water tower there. You just see the tower sticking up. I know on the other side of Lucas Valley, along that ridge, there are tons of cell towers. And it's very appropriate, they're very far away. We look at that right from our backyards. So I request that you reverse the decision and deny this application. Based on history here. I went out for about 20 minutes when I got home, and these are the signatures that I got. And I will continue. And this was just walking down my street. The last time we did this, we had five or six pages that looked like this. And it was an overwhelming, "How come I didn't hear about this? How could they even consider putting this up there?" This is about, like I said, very quick work. So I'll go out again tomorrow. Thank you very much.
Does that conclude the appellant's presentation? Okay. Yes, yes.
Okay, Ben, we need the next one.
Okay, thank you very much. And now invite the applicant to come up and make a presentation.
We're loading that presentation right now.
There's no mic, yeah. Slide deck. Good evening, just tell me next slide.
All righty, will do. So it is 7:15. All righty. Good evening to the planning commission and to the members of the public. My name is Kevin Gallagher. I am here with Complete Wireless Consulting on behalf of the applicant for the project, New Singular Wireless PCS LLC, which does business as AT&amp;T Mobility. Next slide, please. There are two main points that I would like to cover in this presentation. The first is that there's a significant gap in coverage here in this area. And two, that this is... This proposed facility is the least intrusive means of filling the gap. I'll go over alternatives, designs, other potential places. A lot of the questions that were raised, as well as what this is covering over the course of this presentation. Now, you've already seen a lot on the location. There's an aerial shot. We're about 800 feet from the nearest residence, which is across Lucas Valley Road. A little bit further, 1,100 feet, nearest residence to the east on Canyon Oak Drive. The property is on a hill. What I generally want to get here is that Lucas Valley Road is in a valley. So that hill that we are on actually blocks coverage from facilities to the south. And as a result, it really limits where we can put a facility. The coverage goal here, there's several. One, you can see... Oh wait, that's right, there's this thing, right? Yes, all right, there we go. Sorry, I'm sorry, now I just clicked it on to the next one. Is there any way we can go back? Oh, no, okay. Okay, there we go. All right, sorry. So... First goal was this residential neighborhood across Lucas Valley Road as well, residential neighborhood to the east, and then about a two-mile stretch of Lucas Valley Road, where there's currently very poor coverage. Next, I'm going to show you some coverage maps, but they're scaled as best as I can to kind of match this overall view of what you're seeing. All right, next slide, please. Okay, so on the left, we have the existing coverage. On the right, we have the coverage with the proposed facility. On this map, I know that scale is tiny. So the green coverage on these maps represents reliable in-building coverage. The yellow represents reliable in-vehicle coverage. Blue represents reliable outdoor coverage only. And areas that are not shaded in do not have reliable coverage. So we have a substantial area, residential, and then also along the road, where there is currently no reliable coverage, given the amount of 911 calls that come from wireless. That's a public safety concern. So what we are proposing is that, on the left, as you can see, it fills up that gap in Lucas Valley Road. It covers the residential neighborhood across Lucas Valley Road. It covers the residential neighborhood to the east. Now, there's one thing I do want to point out here, and that is what is not covered. You'll notice the blue now extends all the way out to Las Kalinas Avenue. This is intentional. This design that we have here represents a compromise. We work with the engineers on this project and ask, "Well, what do you need to make this work?" Gentlemen, one of the appellants did mention, "Well, why didn't they? They could have asked for a 100-foot-tall tower." And in all honesty, a taller facility would have covered more of that gap. It would also be considerably more prominent. So this, as proposed, represents a compromise. It meant it fills the gap. It does not perfectly fill the gap, but where there is... Was a significant gap, there will no longer be a significant gap. Next slide, please. The one on the left shows the reduced coverage at 36 feet. As you can see, we already lose much of the residential area across Lucas Valley Way. And coverage everywhere is just significantly diminished. This is significant because there is not an alternate site where we can put a facility where it will cover this area. If we put a facility outside the valley, it's going to be blocked from the hills. We got hills to the north, we got hills to the south. We cannot get past that. It's a line-of-sight technology, so that's why we're here on this specific location. Next slide, please. Speaking of, there we are. On the right, you can see the blue is the proposed AT&amp;T facility. Just to the right of that... Oh, I keep forgetting I can do this, I'm sorry. Is where the Sprint is. Sprint's got their equipment down here, and this is kind of water tank, utility-related stuff. There's been some concern expressed about the road, the access road, the fire road. Once the facility is built, everything can be troubleshooted remotely, including restarting equipment, checking equipment. Normally, in the normal course of events, Cell Tech for AT&amp;T, they got ones assigned locally, would visit no more than once a month, more often than not, every couple of months. So it's not going to be a significant issue of wear on the road. And beyond that, as was noted by staff, if there is damage done to the road by construction, AT&amp;T is on the hook for that. And if that's something in a condition of approval, I wouldn't object to it. Next slide, please. There's a rough idea of the facility, 56-foot-tall mono broadleaf. As noted, 49 feet is the top... I gotta stop doing that, sorry. 49 feet is the top of the antennas. Everything above that is to stealth it. Our ability to stealth stuff has gotten a lot better. It's certainly a lot better than it was in 1997. Apparently, they didn't really bother. But that extra height enables it to look like a tree. If you don't have that extra crown, it looks more like a toilet scrubber, really, which doesn't look good. The eye immediately clocks it as not being a natural silhouette, even if you don't know it's there. Next slide, please. Okay, there's a photo of the existing facility. I'll talk a little bit more in depth, but AT&amp;T's proposed facility would just be right up there. That's the water tank right there. All right, next slide, please. Okay, so now I'd just like to walk through what this would look like. At... This is a broadleaf design. It was... It's been mentioned that there are no pine trees up there, and the pine silhouette would be out of its place. So we're switching. Next slide, please. To a... Through a broadleaf. That is the view from Upper Oak Drive. That is about 1,300 feet away. Next slide, please. Next up is the view from Tan Oak Circle. I'll notice on this one, you can actually see the... Or is it Tan Oak Court? Oh, whatever. Sorry, I apologize if I got your street names wrong, folks. You can actually see the Sprint facility to the right. So one thing that I will stress is, one, this is proposed at the minimum functioning height. But even if it is reduced, which costs service, it's not just a compromise. It's people won't have service who would have had it otherwise, and we don't have another way of getting it to them. Even if you do that, it still will be visible. And we think the trade-off is worth it. Next slide, please. There's the view from Lucas Valley Road. That one is about 1,000 feet off. And then, final one. This is the residential neighborhood across Lucas Valley Road, looking south. And this one, it blends pretty well with the trees and such behind. Next slide, please. Okay, so now I'd like to kind of get on to our alternatives analysis. In this case, the alternatives analysis is quite short because there was nowhere outside of this valley where we can get over the hill and cover these residential neighborhoods. And the city of San Rafael, zoning regulations, among other things, there's a 200-foot setback or in connection with the tower height, but it's whichever is greater, and the 200-foot is the greater. So all that yellow is basically everything that's not green, is some flavor of residential. So next slide, please. That means the facility to fill the gap would need to be within that area. That's my rough clouding of what those setbacks look like. We go further west over here, you lose elevation on the hill. You can't get over the hill, you can't cover. It's very common to see cell towers on water tanks, just because we look for the same things that fire departments and water districts look for in terms of elevation. So in this case, if we go closer, we can cover, but obviously, then we're much closer to everybody else. And that would not be less intrusive. Across the road, across the ridge, again, it's not going to get past these hills. It's not going to cover this area. So next slide, please. To get on now to the existing Sprint facility, and that is a 40-foot-tall monopole built circa 1997. We initially, when we looked at this area, we looked up and down. We actually began just talking with the engineers, like what actually fills the area. If we're down in Tulare County, it's real simple. Everything's flat, it's just, you know, build something, you're good. Here, you've got hills. It's scenic, it's pretty, but there's no way... There's a very limited number of places you can cover it. And that's why Sprint's here to begin with. Now, that's got two antennas that are positioned at 360 degrees, 0 degrees is north. So that's positioned to provide coverage along Lucas Valley Road. I say that through inference. Obviously, I don't know what the engineer was thinking back in 1997. But I can say, I think very likely, they have a different coverage objective than we do. In 1997, they wanted to cover the main road. They weren't worrying so much about residential areas. Now, we're trying to cover residential areas, the areas surrounding it. So that's why we've got the different designs, we've got the different needs. Our engineers did actually go out there and have a look at the facility when we're walking it, and they immediately came to the conclusion that that thing is not going to support an extension. Just to show you what you got, we got two antennas up here. We got another Sprint antenna down here, we got the radios down here. So AT&amp;T would not be able to put equipment down here. That's way too low. That's not even clearing the trees, so that's a no-go. So we would need to extend the pole. About 20 feet or so to get something potentially viable at all. And that pole, just looking at it, these flimsy old, small number of antenna poles, they do not support the additional weight. So the conclusion right then was, we would need to build a new pole. Colocation was not an option. Because colocation is not an option here, there's no means to force AT&amp;T to co-locate on the pole. There's no option but to build a new one. Now, if in the future Sprint wants to co-locate, AT&amp;T is happy to allow them to co-locate. And honestly, that would be... I'm sure everyone would be happy to at least have some stealth in there. But at present, we can't force another company to relocate their equipment. I don't know if there's a matter of permits expiring, whether you want to say, "Hey, this isn't the least intrusive means anymore." But I actually... I shouldn't comment on staff and policy or anything like that. So consider that withdrawn. Next slide, please. Beyond the... We'd be happy to have them. So beyond that, that is our project location. The big issue we've got is that, one, the height as is already represents a compromise. A lot of analysis went into this, and that's reflected in those maps that were provided. Those coverage maps, those show an acceptable level of filling that coverage gap where public safety issues are solved, where you can make a call. Even if you're in a blue part of the neighborhood, you know, you can step out. Or maybe you've got some less reliable indoor coverage in that area as opposed to what you got now. So any reduction in height for the facility would not fill the significant coverage gap, which is why we strongly request the planning commission to uphold the staff decision to approve the project at the zoning administrator hearing. And because I tend towards forgetfulness, and I always make notes, and I never actually look at them, which is... If you'll give me a moment, I just want to make sure here. Oh, yeah, this will be engineered to allow for colocation. It's conditioned that way, and that's another issue that's happened in the 90s, since the 90s. A lot of these old sites, there wasn't the same level of sophistication in terms of zoning codes and everything else, whereas now it's pretty routine, and I believe that's a code requirement here, to have this facility be engineered to allow colocation to prevent this sort of situation. That evidently was not the case 30, 30 years ago, 20, 25 years ago. And we have no control over that. We're just kind of dealing with what's there and doing what we can to fill the gap. So with that, I would like to reserve any time I have left for rebuttal, if that is a possibility, if there's any further questions that do come up. And, yeah, we don't have any less intrusive places. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Okay, well, thanks very much. Do any of the commissioners have any questions for the applicant?
Yeah, just a quick question. I think part of the agreement was that if new technology comes along, that you would replace that, and perhaps there would be a lowering of height. Is there anything that you know of that's happening that could change that?
Not to my knowledge. There've been a lot of... There's been a lot of changes over time in terms of the bandwidth and the frequencies that are used. Some of the equipment has gotten smaller. But in areas where we're trying to cover a broad area, there's still the same constraint, where even if the antenna is smaller, it still needs the height, which has always been kind of the biggest visual component of these. It's the facility itself rather than the antennas on there.
So even if the antennas become smaller, you still need that height in order to...
Yeah, I'm not aware of any... I could be wrong, but I... From what I've worked on, I haven't seen any situations like that.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you for the presentation from the applicant. I have a question about colocation. So would that... How many more antennas would this location allow? Like, can you give me the... I think it's six that you said are currently located?
Well, AT&amp;T's... It varies from carrier to carrier. Without... Sprint and T-Mobile typically have fewer, they're cheaper. I'm sorry, I'm not trying to bag on them. But Verizon and AT&amp;T, for a macro, and the ones that I've done, will be like nine to 12, generally. The norm is like a three-sector site like this. And three per sector or four per sector is what's typical. So another carrier co-locating on that would likely do the same. And that would be... Colocations need to be on a different level. So below or above, because of interference, you can't have... They don't play well together next to each other. Even... Even one carriers, where they control everything on that level, don't play well enough together. They have to have that level of spacing that you see. enough together, they have to have that level of spacing that you see, so that they work.
Okay, so, the pole is currently designed to co, like, fully co-locate?
Yeah, it hasn't, we haven't done tower engineering yet. That's something that typically happens after planning approval. But per the COA, would be, one of this height would typically be engineered for one additional carrier.
Okay. Thank you.
I, I do have a question. In creating your images, do you, did you get a sense for how much the new tower would obscure the old tower from view? I mean, the old tower is sticking up like a, like a, like a, no, toilet bed.
That's a good question. I'm going from memory here, and I wasn't sharp enough to have the, it's actually in the packet. They do have them in there where they've got the existing versus that. I, I will say the one, I don't, I don't believe it does from my recollection. I know there's the one where it's clearly visible, and that's the only angle we had where the Sprint Tower was clearly visible, and it was still visible in the photosim. But, so no, I, I don't, I suppose there's some angles where it might, but not, not any of the ones that, that we presented.
Sure, sure. So, so the building of your tower has, well, uses the potential to remove the old tower.
Yeah, as I said, if they wanted to co-locate, or if T-Mobile with the, with the buyout wanted to move Sprint stuff over, that, that would obviously be something that it did, yeah.
And, and you're a consultant in the industry, are you aware of much co-locating that's been going on?
Yeah, co-location is very common. It, it's, it's the, I wouldn't say an absolute majority of the applications that I do are for co-locations, but I will say, this is a fairly unusual situation, where we can't co-locate.
Okay, great. Thanks very much. Is there any other questions? Then let me apologize to the commission and the appellant. I didn't invite questions from the commission for the appellant at the appropriate time. Do any commissioners have questions for the appellant?
No.
Okay. Then I think it's time to open the floor.
We have other questions. You mentioned...
No, that's, I'm sorry.
If I save time for rebuttal and they ask the question in public comment, would I be able to answer them for them in that rebuttal time?
I believe there's opportunity, yes.
Okay.
Did I make a correction, I said it wrong?
So, if, if you would like to make public comment in a moment. Margaret, would you like to open the public comment?
Yeah, so after, so we've heard from the appellant, we've heard from the applicant, and now it is time for members of the public that have not, they're not affiliated with either. The first two parties can come forward, and we're, this is a very unusual meeting, but we're asking folks to try to limit it to three minutes, so that's our goal.
Well, shall we, can we make an exception? Oh, she's affiliated with the appellant. Can we make an exception and invite her up to...
Yeah, I suspect that she's with the neighborhood, I'm not, I, yes, please, have her come up, that's it. Let's, let's take every, but come on up to, actually, right here.
I just pronounced the San Rafael Planning Commission, no, his name wrong, it is Tam Bonini. I wanted to make sure I got that right.
Okay.
And I would like to know how I can submit just the beginning of this. Tam Bonini. T-A-M-B-O-R-I-N-I. I'm sorry, I need my glasses.
Okay.
And how do I submit, just the beginning?
So, so you're welcome to ask questions of staff after the meeting is over?
Okay, great. Okay.
I hope that was right, Margaret. Okay, is there anybody from the public not affiliated with the appellant or the applicant who would like to speak on the issue? If not, then I believe we close the public comment period. And I'll check back with other Planning Commission members to see if there are any residual questions at this time? No? Okay. I close the public hearing, bring the discussion back to the Planning Commission for deliberation. Would any of you like to kick off the deliberation?
I just have a couple of comments. So, I know that you made sure that we saw the 1997 permit and the letter from the planning director. Appreciate your, your doing that. But in 1997, the need for service was so much less than what it is today. In fact, the iPhone wasn't even around in 1997. So, I don't know if we can compare apples and oranges, because the need for better coverage for everybody in Marin is something that we have to weigh against the community's concerns over the visual. So, but bearing in mind that we also have the obligation to make sure that people have access to, to good coverage. So, I just wanted to make that point. Thank you.
Thank you again for the presentation and all the information that you brought forward. I, I will concur with Commissioner Rogby that I remember 1997, because I graduated high school that year, and I know a lot of you guys were much older than that. And there were no cell phones that were being carried. My dorm actually had voicemail, and there was this whole security number located on my, printed on my excuse 90. So it was a very different time. I do sympathize with the community concerns, and I know that this open space was purchased adjacent to the Marin Municipal Water District property where the cell tower is located. There is, I will say that Marin has grown significantly since the time of that tower as well, and the purchase of that land. I know that's to many people's chagrin, but part of, there is growth, and there are a number of residents that live in that area. There are many people who do not have a landline, and I think that, you know, there are a lot of people that are driving down Lucas Valley Road. So I do think the coverage here is a necessary public safety issue. I do, you know, I encourage the appellant to go forward to T-Mobile and Sprint and make an effort to relocate, so that there only is one tower at that location, if that's the, if that's the real, if that's the direction they want to move into. And that's, those are the comments that I have.
Yeah, just appreciate the effort and the diligence by the, the appellant. I think it's important that people show this level of care about, about their community. I think this is an interesting, as we've kind of pointed out, this is an interesting balance of community need versus a really, real, real desire to preserve some aspect of, of the historical element. You know, I think if you will, maybe humor me just a little bit, I think you mentioned that the community was established in 1965. I believe it was only 1977 that it was illegal to create covenants that prevented people who looked like me from buying in that neighborhood. So I think, you know, maybe hopefully you can understand that the historical argument is probably not a compelling one for maybe a lot of the newer demographics that are moving into the, into the community. I think we should also recognize that, and Aspen pointed out, that there's been a significant increase in the need for infrastructure. So I think that's something that we need to, I mean, because I think this is, this is an issue that comes up a lot in the community, where we, we balance the enjoyment of the public space and sort of the, the historical land use that has been sort of created in Marin, which is, to be fair, very beautiful. But I do think that there is a, an increasing social cost to inflexibly preserving that, and not recognizing sort of the needs for some of that other infrastructure, and being sort of accommodating to, yeah, it is sort of an unhappy adjustment, but I think we can make space for both of those things. I think we, we have to. I mean, like, just to be blunt, right, we're talking ultimately, at the end of the day, about legally permitted uses that are enjoyed by the applicant. And I think that to subvert that process in the name of preserving history, subverts a lot of the free-market elements that are important to ensuring that we can address some of the significant economic issues and economic inequalities in the region. Like, these are all things that are tied together. Land use, I mean, 85% of the land, or 83% of the land in Marin is not available for building, and we have a housing crisis. So I think we can also recognize that, like, the, the more that we fight to preserve these elements, which are important, like, that's a greater a cost that we're incurring. So I just encourage folks in the community to, to weigh that, and not solely think about their own sort of personal enjoyment about these community spaces, that there are lots of people that are left out in the cold without resources when we, when we do do that. So I think that's just something that to, to consider as well. But I think, again, just from a procedural standpoint, I think there's, you know, I think if we are to follow sort of the guidelines and the general plan, I think there's, there's a lot of limit that we have as Planning Commission to actually, to, to put a halt to the, the proposed development here, especially if the basis is simply that, like, oh, I liked how things were in 1965. Like, just kind of putting that out a little bit bluntly.
Okay, thank you, commissioners. I, I will echo the sentiment of my other commissioners, it's all very well said, so I'll be relatively brief. Yeah, I mean, in, in, I do want to thank the appellant for coming forward. It is important that the community stand up and speak. But you, you mentioned in your presentation that it was our job to preserve the open space and the quality of life that exists, and I'm not sure that that is our job. Our job is, as, as mentioned, more to weigh competing interests, more to evaluate the appropriateness of, of development, which is coming certainly more rapidly than, than a lot of people would like to Marin. And we have, you know, in fact, limited, limited scope to, to, to influence development. There are other things happening around San Rafael that make displease other people in other ways. And this one is an, an issue of weighing competing interests. I very much understand the view out your, out your back door and how this might impact it. At the same time, I also understand the interest in AT&amp;T of providing service, and the interest in the community to have that service from a public safety standpoint. So, our, our, our task tonight is to weigh those competing interests and, and come up with a, with a decision. Would any of the commissioners like to make a motion for us to entertain? Is that appropriately timed or not?
Absolutely appropriate time.
Okay.
So I'd like to move that we not approve the appeal and leave the agreement as standing.
So I think that's the first option, right? Of the, of the three?
Yeah. Would any of it like to second?
Yeah, I'll second. Commissioner Semudzi.
Through the chair, just to make sure I'm clear on the motion, it is to uphold the decision of the acting zoning administrator, approve the project subject to the findings and conditions found in the draft resolution. Is that...
Yes, thank you, Margaret.
Perfect, I just want to make sure I understood. Thank you.
Okay, Margaret, would we...
Roll call.
Okay. Would you take the roll, please?
Yes, sir, thank you. Commissioner Semudzi, and I am so sorry.
Semudzi, yeah, that's, yes.
Commissioner Rogby?
Yes.
Commissioner Sade?
Yes.
Chair Hafeman?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously. There is an item to be noted. Any interested party may appeal the decision of the Planning Commission to the City Council within five days of this date. And I want to make sure I have the appeal fee. It has to be in writing, and it has to be, set forth the grounds for the appeal and accompanied by the required filing fee. The fee for applicants or non-residents would be $5,000, and the fee for residents is $350, and that's set in our master fee schedule.
Okay. Thank you, Margaret. I believe at this point, we move on to the Director's Report.
That's correct.
I have no further items.
Okay. The Director doesn't have anything to report. Do any of the other commissioners have anything to report at this time? Okay, nothing to report from the commissioners, at which point I will adjourn the meeting. Thank you all very much.